Good evening. My name is Mark Bennett. I'll be calling to order the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular scheduled meeting of the New Kent County Planning Commission. If you would, please rise for a moment of silence and pledge to the flag.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bennett. I'll be calling to order the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular scheduled meeting of the New Kent County Planning Commission. If you would, please rise for a moment of silence and pledge to the flag.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bennett. I'll be calling to order the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular scheduled meeting of the New Kent County Planning Commission. If you would, please rise for a moment of silence and pledge to the flag.
Ms. Barrett, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving along, we'll be following our agenda tonight. We have the review and approval of the minutes for the September eighteenth regular meeting. I call upon commissioners to review that document quickly and please announce any errors, corrections, or clarifications.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Second paragraph, I think I should say Mr. Graber Lovick addressed the commission. And then we've got Mr. Gordon's name spelled two different ways. I assume it's G-O-R-D-O-N, as is in the first paragraph, but then second and third paragraph has a D-A-N. And the last correction I have is under the paragraph where it says key points for the presentation, I think I should say population projections suggest continued growth, strike the S.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. LaRochelle. Any other committee commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections noted by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Roll call.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Stay.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving along, we'll be following our agenda tonight. We have the review and approval of the minutes for the September eighteenth regular meeting. I call upon commissioners to review that document quickly and please announce any errors, corrections, or clarifications.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Second paragraph, I think I should say Mr. Graber Lovick addressed the commission. And then we've got Mr. Gordon's name spelled two different ways. I assume it's G-O-R-D-O-N, as is in the first paragraph, but then second and third paragraph has a D-A-N. And the last correction I have is under the paragraph where it says key points for the presentation, I think I should say population projections suggest continued growth, strike the S.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. LaRochelle. Any other committee commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections noted by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Roll call.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Stay.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is citizens' comment period, where the citizens who are here in the audience can address this commission with any topic other than any topics that we have as a part of the public hearing process. Being there are none, I will close the citizen's comment period. Item number six is presentations. Mr. Hathaway, I believe, do you have something for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. This evening I have before you a draft FY twenty-five through twenty-nine capital improvement program. The capital improvement program is a five-year planning tool that is used by the county to predict and plan for upcoming capital expenditures. Section fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-nine of the Code of Virginia states that local planning commissions may, at the direction of the governing body, prepare and revise annually a capital improvement program based on the comprehensive plan of a locality for a period not to exceed the ensuing five years. And you have that planned before you today for your consideration. Today is just a presentation. I am not requesting any action. I ask that you review the information that's been presented to you today, which you have in front of you, and I would ask that we, if we're ready to schedule a public hearing at your January meeting, to receive comments from the public and consider a recommendation to the board. Per the New Kent County's financial policy, a capital expenditure is twenty-five thousand dollars or more, and an item that has an estimated useful life of five years or more. The plan that you have before you covers fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine and includes projects totaling seventy-two million, two hundred and thirty-seven, six hundred and seventy-two dollars for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-five. That's a big number, and really it's not that much, but I'll break that down in just a second. Of that amount, there is nine million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars of funding proposed to come out of our capital fund balance. Approximately one point two million would come from grants and proffers, and there is sixty-one million, five hundred thousand dollars in school projects that would require a debt funding. And I know that that document, which was just prepared today by our finance department, that document shows that I am recommending those school projects. That is not the case at this moment, and that's mainly because I've not yet seen our operating revenues, projected operating revenues for next fiscal year, so I'm really not in a position to determine if we can sustain the debt service for that amount of money. But I do want to bring those projects to your attention. It is just not my recommendation at this time. I also want to apologize. Just seeing this booklet this afternoon, I realized that the projects are really, really small. Therefore, so small that I actually have my reading glasses, which I hate wearing in public, but I will so I can get through this. But I also want to let you know that I will be emailing you these spreadsheets tomorrow, so you'll have them in a readable format for your review. And just touching on projects that are planned for next fiscal year, this is a five-year document, and there are other projects in this document, but I'll be focusing primarily on next fiscal year. And the first group of projects is for our airport, where we have one project proposed for next fiscal year, project totaling one hundred thousand dollars, and that is for the engineering and design of additional hangars at our New Kent County Airport. This is a project that's important to me. Hangars generate revenues. We are full right now at the airport. We have no additional hangar space to lease at the airport at this time, and I believe due to our rates compared to other airports around the region, I don't believe we'll have any issues filling the new hangars that are being proposed. But this hundred thousand dollars is only for design and engineering. Moving down to administration, there is a project titled the Warnie Community Center Construction Project. This is a proposed community center, projected to cost one point eight million dollars, to be located on county-owned property next to the Warnie Nature Trail. We have no community centers in the east end of the county, which would provide additional recreational opportunities there. Our Quentin Community Center on the western end of the county is very successful. It stays booked and reserved, and we believe that there's just of a need, if not greater, in the eastern portion of the county. We're also running into another issue, and another reason that this is being proposed is we have no permanent voting precinct in the Eltham District. We've previously used, I believe it's Whitmore Chevrolet. They've informed us that they no longer wish to have their facility used as a precinct, and we've looked through the entire Eltham District and have not found another suitable site for a precinct. We were fortunate during the last election, we were able to utilize a space that is currently on the market for lease. We hope that that space will be available for the upcoming elections, but it is on the market for lease. If that space becomes leased, we may look at hosting the Eltham precinct in a tent facility. We've done it before in other precincts, but it's not an ideal situation. So there's kind of two purposes that this new community center would serve. Moving down to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, no projects proposed for next fiscal year, but there are some projects proposed in the out years that we're currently working on in this fiscal year, and that's a rebuild of the Route one oh six, exit two eleven interchange, primarily to accommodate buckies, but for other planned economic development growth in that area as well. We're also looking at converting the roundabout on one fifty-five, which is currently a temporary roundabout, to a permanent roundabout structure. Moving down to fire and rescue, ambulance replacement of six hundred thousand dollars, that's two ambulances. There's also proposed a readiness and preparedness plan, an emergency plan, of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, proposed for next year. This is a county-wide plan, which would involve the schools, too, for disaster and emergency preparedness. PPE turnout gear, that's just, that's the firefighter gear that they, that they wear. It's expensive gear, but it does also have a life, a shelf life as well, and we're at the point where some of that gear needs to be renewed, or we need a new, needs to be replaced. EMS equipment, too, of eighty thousand dollars. This is basically a CPR device that our fire and rescue department currently use that does chest compressions automatically. We have started using this through grants last year, and we've had a lot of success with it, and it's something that we would like to have in all of our ambulance facility, ambulance vehicles. For general services, we have a couple of projects proposed for that. One is replace paved structures surfaces. That is in the courthouse complex, this complex here. The pavement is in need of repaving. We also have a project proposed to replace the HVAC units in our radio shelters. We have five public radio, public safety communications shelters throughout the county that are in need of replacement of their HVAC systems. These shelters contain computer equipment. It's all computer equipment, and they have, that equipment has to be kept at a certain temperature, or it will overheat and we will lose it. So this is a very important project for us. For IT, I won't go over all the IT projects, but you'll see before you, there are some server replacement projects, some replacement of switches, infrastructure upgrades. There's also a GIS photography purchase, which the state flies to county every three years, and we have an opportunity to purchase that GIS data. If you go to our website and see our GIS tool, that is the data that we're purchasing from the state. We try to purchase it every three years because we are a fat, high-growth community, and things are changing constantly, so it helps us to have the most recent data. And then I'll move down to parks and recreation. The Cumberland Marsh Project, I am not recommending at this time for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Neither am I recommending the park development for five hundred and four, which the park development really is the next phase of Pine Fork Park, and building that out. I'm not recommending that we move forward with the second phase for FY twenty-five. What I'd like for our Parks and Rec staff to do is really look at the master plan for that park, so we can be sure of the direction that we want to go for the next phases. Also, McKinney Woods, I'm not recommending that at this time. This was to develop some athletic fields at McKinney Woods. Again, I'm asking Parks and Rec to look at the master planning of that site before we start constructing facilities. I'd like to have a vision of where we want to be with McKinney Woods. I am recommending construction of a splash pad facility at Quentin Park, located off of Hinpek Road. We've gotten a lot of requests from our residents for this type of facility, and I think it would be a great addition to Quentin Park. So we do have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the construction of a splash pad at Quentin Park. Have a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for parking lot improvements and trail improvements at Quentin Park as well. Seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the construction of basketball courts at Pine Fork Park. Sixty thousand dollars for, it says, park equipment. This is actually to replace our reel mower. It's, it's an expensive mower. It's basically used for golf courses and athletic fields. It has sort of a precision cut, a brand-new vehicle. A mower would cost sixty thousand dollars. I propose forty-five thousand dollars. The mower that we recently have was a refurbished mower, and we got about ten years out of that, that mower, and I've asked them to look for another refurbished opportunity. There is a request for a historic school concession stand. I am not proposing that that be funded at, at this time. And I'm sorry, for the previous one, the park equipment, I'm recommending thirty thousand, not forty-five. Those are the projects for Parks and Recreation that I am recommending. Moving to the school board, the debt service request that we've received from the schools, fifty-five million dollars for the replacement of the New Kent Elementary School. I know it says renovation here, but it's actually a replacement of the existing New Kent Elementary School. The plan would be to demolish the existing school after the new school is built right beside that, that facility. That is a request from the schools. We have some planning to do, me and my staff, to determine the affordability of that request. Definitely it would require debt service, that, that project be debt-funded. We've also received a request for the expansion of New Kent Middle School for three point five million dollars. This would add approximately six classrooms to the existing middle school. And we've also received a request from the schools for the construction of a turf field and a new track at our athletic complex totaling two million dollars. Other projects requested by the schools, the replacement of the HVAC systems at New Kent Middle School totaling one point five million dollars, the replacement of five school buses totaling three point eight million dollars. One school bus totals about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars now, which is, is hard to imagine. I believe when I, my first budget, we were buying, back in two thousand and twelve, we were buying buses for about seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, these buses, they have air conditioning and the sensors and cameras and all of that, and the prices have significantly increased. Roof replacement at the high school has been requested. That project totals four hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. District-wide lighting, replacing all the school lighting to LED lighting, for a total cost of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The addition of security cameras for two hundred thousand dollars. I believe this is for all the school campuses. Wi-Fi upgrades within the high school, a project totaling a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Digital conversion, that is the Chromebooks that we provide all middle and high school students. Well, they have take homes, but we also provide Chromebooks in the elementary schools, too. They're just not take-home Chromebooks. Total cost of a hundred thousand dollars for that. The total cost of the Chromebooks for the schools is three hundred thousand. We currently fund two hundred out of our operating fund and a hundred thousand out of our capital. District-wide paving, eighty thousand dollars. School vehicles, these are the non-bus vehicles, school bus vehicles, seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we have roof maintenance, totaling twenty-five thousand, and this is just a normal maintenance fund that they keep to address, address any issues that may arise through the school year. And then there's a school miscellaneous, which mainly involves painting during the summer season, and that fund totals twenty-five thousand dollars as well. And there's a request for new curtains at the high school for twenty-five thousand. The sheriff's office request, radio replacement project, well, it's listed as a radio replacement project, but it's actually much more. They've requested six hundred and eleven thousand dollars for that. I am not proposing to fund that for this fiscal year. We will take a look at that next fiscal year. Radio system upgrade, in this current year, we've appropriated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've just gotten pricing back from our vendor. We need another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move the project forward, and therefore we're requesting that for next fiscal year. There was a request for a community officer's safety protection vehicle. I am not proposing that we move forward with funding for that vehicle this year. This vehicle is a specialized vehicle. It's basically an armored vehicle. It's not a tank, but it's an armored vehicle that's been requested by our sheriff's office. I'm hoping that we may be able to find some grant opportunities within the next fiscal year to, to make this purchase, or to go towards a purchase in FY twenty-six. I am proposing the purchase of mobile messaging boards. We're always borrowing these boards from VDOT when we have special events or things arise throughout the county. We currently have two, which is not enough, so I am proposing that we purchase two additional. And also dispatch console licensing, which is a software purchase for our dispatch workers, totaling forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Social services, they've requested the purchase of a shed facility that would go on-site. Currently, we are leasing space in the, a mini-storage facility. I believe with the one-time purchase of ten thousand dollars for a shed facility, we can discontinue our current leases, and that will save us money in, in the long run. I won't go through all the vehicle replacements, but I will state that we do have a vehicle replacement policy. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dot miles for our vehicles. It qualifies a vehicle for replacement. A hundred thousand miles for public safety vehicles. And I'm sorry, it's a hundred and fifty for county vehicles, a hundred thousand miles for public safety vehicles. The reason there's a difference between our regular county vehicles and the public safety vehicles, our public safety vehicle spends a lot of time It qualifies a vehicle for replacement. 100,000 miles for public safety vehicles. And I'm sorry, it's 150 for county vehicles, 100,000 miles for public safety vehicles. The reason there's a difference between our regular county vehicles and the public safety vehicles, our public safety vehicle spends a lot of time idling and definitely has a lot more wear and tear than our regular county vehicles. Not only do they spend a lot of time idling, they also pick up speed at greater distance in shorter times, so therefore, it's just more wear and tear on those vehicles. And I won't go through our computer replacement proposals, too, but I will add a note on that as well. We replace all of our computers every five years, and the reason we replace them every five years is that's the longest amount of time that we can get a warranty on those computers. So, therefore, all of our computers want a five-year replacement. Also, in the computer replacement schedule, there are some copier machines as well. We've made the decision two years ago to discontinue our leases and to purchase our copy machines outright. We've ran the numbers, and we found that it's cheaper for us to actually purchase than the lease agreements that we had at the time. You also have on page nine, public utilities projects. The reason we separate public utilities from our other capital improvements is because of the funding source. Public utility projects are funded solely through connection fees and user fees. There's no tax dollars that go towards our public utilities department, so we do keep those separate. There are a list of projects that are planned, and I won't go over each of those, but I will hit two of them, actually, while I'm looking at them. We are looking at building a sludge facility right now from our wastewater treatment plant. We ship our sludge to Henrico County, and we pay them to treat our sludge, and that's a significant cost for us, not only the treatment of the sludge, but also the transportation of the sludge as well. We do believe by building our own facility will pay off for the county over time. There's also another big project here, and that's surface water withdrawal project, and this is land acquisition and for easements and for the actual intake facility on the Pumonkie. Couple of years ago, several years ago, we received a permit from DEQ to withdraw water from the Pumonkie River. The state is really forcing New Kent, and not just New Kent, all localities that currently withdraw water from the Lower Potomac Aquifer. That aquifer is stressed right now, and the state is forcing all localities, especially the closer you are to the Fall Line, which is the shallowest point of that aquifer. They are encouraging us to find an alternative water source. That means we need to look at buying water from an adjacent locality, or it doesn't have to be adjacent, but from another locality in the region, or we can look at doing our own surface water withdrawal. Right now, we are leaning towards doing our own surface water withdrawal. We have talked, we are talking to a couple of localities about buying water from them. As we look at the costs right now, there's not much difference in the costs, and because those costs are so close, the preferred path forward is for us to withdraw from the Pumonkie. Again, I will be emailing you this spreadsheet so that you can review this in your own time. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and as we get closer to the January Planning Commission meeting, we will determine if we're at a position where we can move forward with a public hearing. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions now, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? If I could. Mr. Hathaway, did we ever look into the issue about the used cars, the Ford Explorers that we have, and trying to move them into the school systems?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. We have gotten a, I guess, a determination from the State Board of Education that we can use SUVs to transport students, and I'm sorry, and that was the issue. There was a very old ruling from the state that forbade us from transporting kids in SUVs. I can understand that with some of the very older SUVs that were kind of more top-heavy, and there were issues of rolling over, but the SUVs today, that is not the case. So, we have gotten a determination from the state that we can use those, so we will be transporting, transferring those to the schools.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Hathaway? I do have two for you, sir, a little bit off of your agenda here, but has there been any consideration or dialogue regarding the replacement of this building? It feels like sometimes it gets stressed.
Replacement of this building?
Correct.
Yes. In fact, starting the beginning of the year, we, I've already entered into an agreement with mostly architecture to do a study for the county that will work with each department and determine their long-term needs, and utilizing those surveys from each department, they will determine the size building that we need, the number of parking spaces we need, the amount of land that we need. And once we have that study completed, then we can start planning financially for a new administration building, which is definitely a need.
The second question I have is with the former post office being vacant now for some time, is that, question number one, is that a county facility or is that a US government facility? And number two, is there any consideration on the reuse of that facility for any of the county's needs?
Sure. Actually, it's a private, it's privately owned. It's not owned by the post office. It's not owned by the county. I have had conversations with the owner, I believe lives in Middlesex County. We're talking. We're not at the same place in price right now. He thinks a lot of that building.
I'm sure he does.
So, hopefully, we can get to a more common ground, yes.
Seeing no others, thank you, Mr. Hathaway, very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Okay.
I'll turn my attention to Ms. Leduke. I don't think we have any unfinished business, do we? No, we do not. We'll move along. We'll now turn over to the public hearing portion of this agenda, and I'll give it to our friend over here, Dr. Schmidt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have one public hearing before us. It has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearing. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Number two, the staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. Number three, the sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Number four, commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. And five, I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors of the administration building. I ask the following. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission, and limit your comments to three minutes. When the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. The public hearing for tonight is application CUP-02-23, New Leaf Energy Incorporated.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the requests and then invite the applicants to come up and give their presentation. Representatives from New Leaf Energy have applied for a conditional use permit to construct a 2-megawatt solar facility on approximately 23 acres of land located east of Eltham Road, north of Henrico County Regional Jail, and Polishtown Road. They'll show us the maps for reference. The property is part of a larger parcel that is zoned industrial and is designated as industrial in the comprehensive plan. The New Kent County zoning ordinance requires a CUP in the industrial zoning district for an energy generation facility. The applicant held a community meeting, which they'll get further into regarding the project, and provided responses to all the questions and concerns that came up during the meeting. Handed out a copy of those responses before the meeting tonight at your place. The facility is proposed to be accessed off Polishtown Road, and after construction, the anticipated vehicle traffic generated from the facility will be one or two vehicles per day. The applicant will work with VDOT and the county throughout the construction period to ensure that the public roads utilized are properly maintained. The performance standards, which we all worked so hard on last year, as you recall, in the zoning ordinance, along with the proposed conditions written into this permit, will help to address any visual and noise impacts the project may create. Specific buffers and screening will be required, and construction will be restricted to, excuse me, to daylight hours. Decommissioning of the site to remove the project components and return the land to another permitted land use will be required of the applicant at the end of the project life. The standards for review of CUPs are set forth in Section 98-744 of the county code and are listed in your staff memo. There are 18 proposed conditions in the PC Resolution, PC 12-23 before you this evening, and I'll introduce Jessie and Quentin after I make sure this works.
Yep, we should be all set. Just keep the arrow on the screen.
Okay.
And it just moved. Okay, there it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no. We're too short for the microphone. Hi, good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. Like Kelly said, I'm Jessie Robinson with New Leaf Energy, project developer, and here with me is Quentin Wood, our project engineer. And this project is proposed on Polishtown Road with Weir Creek LLC, owned by John Kinney. Oh, my gosh. Hold on here.
Scroll, scroll back down.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, or do that.
Yeah, okay. So, just some history about who we are. This company was formed by three brothers in 1980, and we've developed projects for about 40 years now across the nation, including in California, New York, Massachusetts, Illinois, and Virginia. About last year, our EPC, our construction firm, and O&amp;M, operation and maintenance firm, broke off from us, so we changed our name. We're just development-only now, so our name changed to New Leaf Energy, but it's the same team and same leadership as before. So, the Virginia Clean Economy Act is what passed a few years back and is sort of why folks have probably been hearing more about solar in Virginia, where Dominion has to acquire over 1,000 megawatts of solar by 2035. So, this project proposed off Polishtown Road, a 2-megawatt project, would be part of, we would apply for the Dominion RFP with the hope that Dominion will ultimately own this project long-term. These are two projects that we've built in the past. The one on the left shows a fixed-tilt racking system where the racking is stationary. That's what we would be using for this project. The one on the right is a single-axis tracker, which follows the path of the sun during the day. And so, like Kelly said, this project is located off of Polishtown Road and Route 33 across from Henrico County Jail. You can see it's quite a large parcel outlined here. It's about 150 acres, and we're on this portion, the eastern portion, so just a part of the And it is a 2-megawatt project, about 15 acres fenced for the facility, and then an additional 17 acres that we'd use primarily for vegetative buffering and then stormwater controls as well. And y'all may remember us from last year, we came to y'all for this project, didn't make it past the Board of Supervisors, so we took their feedback and implemented it into the design to make it better. So, we downsized the project. Initially, it was 3 megawatts, now it's 2 megawatts. We also doubled the vegetation buffer. It was 50 feet, and now it's 100 feet at the Warren-Ee Trail, Warren-Ie Trail, and we downsized our footprint, too. It was 25 acres, now it's 15 fenced, and the impervious area of the project then dropped by 33% as well. And our panels are at least 150 feet away from Warren-Ie Trail, or more. So, a couple of reasons why we chose this parcel. Number one, the landowner's interested in kind of having multiple uses on this property. Like Kelly said, it's industrially zoned, and he does want to develop a portion of it for industrial. The area we're using for solar is sort of like a less desirable portion of the property. It's steeper slope, it's next to a transmission line. The western portion, you can kind of see on the map here, the landowner has paid out-of-pocket to kind of prepare it, so it's more desirable for industrial use. He has like a concrete pad here. I think Dominion Energy has been leasing it for some time, and it seems like there's a possibility it'll be developed in the future, so this would not be impacting that. Also, we're pretty far back from Route 33, and there are no homes surrounding this property. We're across from jail, very minimal visibility. There's existing trees on the property that we can use for the buffering, so it's mature trees from day one. It'll be screening the facility very well. And there's also the infrastructure we need for the project interconnection-wise. We connect to the distribution lines that run along roads, the smaller local circuits that run to a local sub. We interconnect to those, not the transmission lines. We don't need like a substation for this project. And staff found that this project would preserve the existing rural character of the neighborhood. And we've touched on this a little bit. We're using sort of the least desirable portion of the property. Like we said, it's pretty steep slope, around 20%, that we can work with with our racking for our projects, whereas it would have to be graded probably for an industrial building, and it wouldn't preclude the remaining portion of the property to be used for industrial or after the project is decommissioned, it could also be used for an industrial development. We did conduct community outreach, like Kelly said, with a meeting on December 6. We notified folks within a mile of the property. We put some ads in the newspaper. We had about 20 attendees, and I think we had a good discussion. I know there's been a project built in the past, and we are really open to incorporating feedback into this permit to respond to what folks are concerned about, and that's sort of some of the conditions we've proposed on top of the ones that the county puts on our project in response to the feedback. So, some of those are local workforce. We are putting a condition that we would include local contractors to bid onto the project for building it, giving them an opportunity to do so. We would also have signage in front of the facility for emergency contacts if someone in the community needs to contact somebody for, if there's an issue with the system or just in the case of an emergency, there'd be a way to notify somebody and get in contact. Also, we're sort of restricting ourselves a bit on the routes we can use for transportation. We would put together a plan before construction, and then we'd have to stick to that plan. It's kind of what we're proposing, and not use other local routes. And we would revisit that to use for decommissioning for the project as well. Also, just for vegetative maintenance, proposing a condition that will work with the county and kind of use their feedback or advice for what is an appropriate interval for maintaining the vegetation so that we're doing that regularly and it's tied to the permit, and we would be held to that. And similarly with stormwater, the county has like a maintenance agreement formed that we would work through with them during site plan approval to make sure that there's a decision on how often we need to inspect stormwater controls periodically and maintain those facilities, and this would be a part of the permit, which has not been done in the past for projects, so it's got a bit more teeth to it. If we If we failed to follow those, the county has more control over enforcing that for us. And then we're also proposing like an upfront payment to the county at building permit, just additional revenue that the county can put towards something they want. We're currently proposing the Warreni Trail, but we're open to changing that dedication to something else, but just another way that there's additional benefits from this project for the community. And this condition is proposed by the county. We just wanted to add, it's about maintaining the roads and sort of having a video documentation of what the roads look like before and after construction. We just put a timeframe on when that would happen, so we're saying thirty days before and thirty days after construction is what we're proposing.
All right, so these next couple of slides, so if you can hear me, these next couple of slides are some obliques of a rendering of the facility. What you see right here is positioned over top of the Henrico Jail, looking generally in a northerly direction. You have Polish Town along here. We'll be utilizing the existing vegetation in order to properly screen Polish Town Road from the facility. In blue surrounding the site is just a depiction of stormwater basins. They would be dry and green, but just so everyone can kind of envision where they're going to be at, we left them as blue. This next slide here is also another oblique. This is looking in the general westerly direction. In the foreground is the transmission line, and again, you can see how we're utilizing the existing topography of the terrain in order for the establishment of our fixed tilt solar. And you can see the stormwater basins that we're proposing, down gradient of those proposed improvements. And again, Polish Town Road is over here on this side with access coming into our equipment And again, here's another oblique looking in the easternly direction. This is Polish Town Road. You can see the vegetation, that we're maintaining the existing vegetation along the front. Again, stormwater, our access pad with a little turnaround, and the equipment laid out there. This is a top view of that rendering, and the orange line just generally depicts the landscaping that we're looking to preserve as part of the project to maintain that screening. These couple of slides here, we were out on the Warreni Trail and took some photos at various locations where it comes in close to the project, and we went back and did this after we had received some feedback last year from the Board of Supervisors and tried to address their concerns regarding the visibility of the project from the trail. So this photo here is just some existing photos. At the top right is a legend. The dots indicate the pictures, where the pictures were taken. The bottom-left picture was taken at this red, at this dot here, and then the bottom-right was taken from that dot up there. And then here's another photo of the trail, slightly off from there, more of a panoramic view. And you can see the mature trees, which is on the Warreni Trail, and then you can see the thicker trees in the background. That's actually the property line for the project, and then beyond that is where the facility would be situated. So this visual sim here shows the existing, a little bit zoomed in from that previous site. You can see the thick brush trees on the property there where the site's going to be And then afterwards, it's really not going to change anything along the property line. It's really thinning everything out beyond there, where we're going to be cutting down in order to put the solar facility. This is a photo from Polish Town Road, looking in a general north-northeast direction. Again, you can see the vegetation along the front. The existing electric line is running just beyond the tree line there that we would be tying into. And then this would be afterwards. You can see our poles back there to where we're tying into the electric, and we're maintaining the existing vegetation to screen from the solar panels tucked in behind there. And then here's just a split view. The existing's on the left, and then on the right would be the proposed access into So one of the big things that came up during the community meeting was just stormwater management, and I think that is important to note that DEQ in the past year or so has changed how they've been handling stormwater for these solar facilities. They're now considering the panels themselves to be impervious, whereas previously they had only considered the foundation. So what that does is that really allows us to more or less over-design our stormwater BMPs to ensure that we can capture any type of runoff from there and control those rates and volumes before it leaves the site. So the stormwater management aspect of these projects focuses in on, just a clicker, water quality, water quantity. So the water quality focuses in on the existing or pre-development and the post-development land cover from forest into meadow and vice versa. And what we do is we implement best management practices, also known as BMPs, which could be anything from filter strips to sediment basins in order to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus loading when you do that change of cover. And that's something that's outlined within the Virginia Code for Stormwater, and also as part of the county as well. The next portion of stormwater management focuses on the water quantity, and that analyzes the pre-development runoff rates of how much water's coming off of your site in the pre-development, and then you have to analyze it in the post-development without controls. You then look at the difference of the two, and whatever the difference is, you have to design best management practices in the post-development, so that way, when you, after the storm comes through post-development, it is then released at the same rate or less than pre-development. And the purpose of that is so you don't cause any type of flooding or erosive conditions to the downstream properties. So this slide here is just focusing in on just the pre-development conditions. Again, I was talking about the different watersheds and how that kind of disperses across the project. So you have the James River to the south, and I believe you have the York to the north. You can see in the cyan here, this is one drainage area. This is another drainage area that's contributing down through here, and then the other ones are going to the north side, so it's kind of split. So when we go through our actual stormwater management design with the county, we would be using this, and then we would also analyze in the post-development in order to determine, you know, the appropriate sizing of the best management practices in each one of these small watersheds. So the construction of the facility is approximately six to eight months. As Kelly had noted, we do have restrictions as to when construction can and cannot commence. And as far as the operation of the facility goes, the project life cycle is initially twenty years and can go all the way up to forty years. It is operated remotely, and typically you have an operator out there bi-weekly or monthly just doing periodic inspections. And then we foresee this having two to four long-term jobs associated with it from the vegetative maintenance side of things, and then also just a system operation and maintenance as well. And the other aspect to the facility is obviously the decommissioning. An important thing with that is obviously bonding the site with, from the foundations, which would be steel, to the panels, to the wiring, and things of that nature. Some of the solar panels, typically what you do is you would evaluate that for like resale or reused, you could upcycle them as well. There are some recycling facilities, although very few currently within the United States. And then the ones that are too badly damaged, obviously would go to an approved facility or more or less a landfill. The system removal for the decommissioning takes anywhere from four to six months. Some small-scale solar benefits that the project would provide to the county is obviously a tax revenue increase for the particular project, and that would be about $272,000. Some other benefits to this is, as previously noted, the traffic as a result of this project would be very minimal. I had indicated one to two, but you know, like I said, I anticipate being more of a bi-weekly visit. Some other things that we do is as part of the vegetation of the facility itself, we do use like a native seed mix, and that includes vegetation underneath the panels as well. So really, the only gravel or impervious surfaces other than DEQ regulating the panels would be your pad for the equipment and then the access road coming on in. In addition to that, you know, the project will improve the reliability of the local circuit we're tying into, and we can provide some clean energy to the local homes as well. In addition to just the creation of temporary jobs during construction, some long-term jobs as well. So another question we had received is, and concerns is obviously the property value for those adjacent to the project. And there has been some third-party studies conducted around Virginia, and what they had found was that there really is an effect to the adjacent property values when they've studied projects within the vicinity of, you know, pre-development to post-development. These next couple of slides are just a few frequently asked questions. Some of them were asked during the community meeting, so I'm not going to go through all of them, but I will touch on probably a couple for you. So I basically talked on the panels, what happens if they're damaged. Again, you know, we look to recycle them if possible. If we can't, then we would, you know, obviously dispose them at an appropriate place. But as far as indicating whether they are or not damaged, a lot of times you can kind of identify that in the production of the unit from remotely, so at that point in time, you then send an operator out to go and take a look at that. Some other questions that we often get is do the panels leach? Again, we select the tier-one modules, which come with the SDS sheets and the T-clips to show that they are non-hazardous, and there's been other studies that's been conducted at the federal level that do show that, you know, these panels do not leach into the Some other questions that we have received is, you know, disruption to the wildlife habitat. DWR had published some guidance recommending that you provide wildlife corridors if your facility exceeds forty acres of fenced areas. And in addition to that, I had talked about the disposal of the panels. We had went back and talked to some other people within the company. We had actually had decommissioned two projects as of late, and both of those projects, we were actually able to resell, reuse those panels as opposed to recycling or disposing of them. Some other questions that we've been asked is, you know, does a project need some substation? As Jessie had mentioned, we do not need a substation or a massive transformer. This is a small distribution project. We're going to tie into the local grid, so all of our equipment is going to be within, generally situated within the central portion of the project. And the other question we often get is who's going to own the project? Obviously, we're developers, and again, we're looking to participate in Dominion Energy's RFP, so likely Dominion Energy will be the long-term owner of this project. And as such, you know, as part of the community meeting and everything, you know, that's why we've reached out and we're trying to propose these additional conditions to try to capture the community's input, to make sure that those conditions stay with Dominion Energy so it gets followed through its project life cycle. So in summary, here's just a couple of the guidelines there for the conditional use permit. Hopefully, we've been able to demonstrate through this presentation within our application that we've been able to meet those guidelines. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the sponsors?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Robinson and Mr. Wood. From the display, I see that there was only one public meeting that you had, and that was back on the sixth. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
That's great.
Do you have any display with you tonight that compares what the prior proposal was and what the current proposal, so we can see the net effect of the improvement, improved project? Do you have any display of that sort?
No, I don't have an overlay showing the previous project to what it is currently.
There's a public, I mean, a transmission line southeast of this site that looked like it could possibly be utilized for access to the site, especially during construction. Has there been any consideration of using that as access to the site, thereby negating the primary entrance right off Polish Town Road?
So, here you can add if you want, but the transmission right-of-way is kind of owned by Dominion, and they generally don't allow like permanent uses in the right-of-way. Sometimes you can have approvals like cross-under, but it couldn't be like our primary access point.
I'll continue with my question. If I remember from the town meeting, I'll call it, on December 6th, this facility will ultimately be owned by Dominion, correct?
Yes, they're all different departments and groups, and it's usually for like safety and access of the transmission lines. They don't want obstructions within the right-of-way if they need to access it.
I would explore that opportunity if, because it would just prepare a site for a better visual effect from Polish Town Road. Dominion's a public utility, is, once this is converted, I'm going to convert it in ownership from the landowner to Dominion, will the taxation rate change as this will become a public utility site, not a private site?
So this would be a lease, a lease of the project, that Dominion would take over, but they would not own the property?
Okay, I don't know if that answered my question fully.
Oh, so that would not change...
Would the taxation be different because of, in essence, Dominion's still the operator, user, beneficiary of the use of the property once it's sold to, or leased by Dominion? Again, will the taxation change?
So the underlying taxes wouldn't change. The solar project would have taxes on top of what's currently paid to the county, and Dominion would be subject to those. It's real estate tax and personal property tax that get to the total estimate of 272,000.
Thank you. I mean, there was some expressed concerns from past history with the other solar project about what happened after the installation of the panels and the stabilization of the site. And my thought process after hearing that dilemma seemed like it would be valuable to have a health check that would occur, or health check inspection that would occur periodically at the site, that would be, in my eyes, be commissioned by the ultimate user, Dominion at the time, but with a group that is approved by the county, that would go out about every three years to know any damage from burying animals or reels that may have created over the course of the three years, something like that. Is that something you would be open to?
So that was our proposed condition that we had put in there regarding the stormwater.
I'm looking outside the stormwater. I'm looking at the site, too. Stormwater's fine, because that's periodic inspection anyway, but I'm looking at the general site.
It's a general inspection.
That's somewhere into the stormwater ponds.
Yeah, we'd be open to that if y'all, if Kelly or someone could draft language, and we'd be happy to review, as long as it's, the language is good. I mean, I like that idea.
And my final question is, has a siting agreement been drafted for this proposal?
So, good question. Small-scale projects, five megawatts or less, cannot sign siting agreements. It's kind of like in the code, but that's part of the, what we can do is propose a condition for a voluntary payment, which is that $50,000 payment we're offering.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the revenue, the $272,000. Is that over a forty-year...
Yeah.
So about $7,000 a year?
It's, well, it escalates every year, so it probably averages around that. It'd be, yeah, so it's equivalent to about 10,000 per acre for real estate tax, so that's times the size of the project and then the real estate tax rate, and then there's personal property tax, which is like M&amp;T calculations that the county does.
But if you have that number per acre, is the value, it's not the revenue?
Right, yeah, I'm just, that's how it's calculated. Yeah, I think the current taxes on the project, it's about, sorry, on the property, it's about 1,300 per year for that area of taxes, which is 53,000 over forty years, so it's about a five-time increase in taxes.
My other question has to do with wildlife and displacement of wildlife, and it sounds like your solution to that is to basically put a fence up. Is that correct? Or, I mean, there's 23 acres, and your first sentence says, "We do not anticipate displacement of wildlife from this project, given the size." Twenty-three acres is a lot of land for wildlife. Twenty-three acres is a lot of land for wildlife. And can you just go over how you would propose to mitigate that?
Yeah, so it's actually fifteen acres of fenced. Twenty-three acres, I think, includes a portion of the stormwater. Um, so it's fifteen acres that's fenced. And like I said, I, I go back to the Department of Wildlife Resources that published guidance regarding different corridors and things of that nature to where you need to actually account for where it's going to impact, um, the migratory, I guess, life of the larger mammals, more or less. I mean, you're still going to be able to get your squirrels and things like that on and through the fence. You'll actually provide some additional habitat for some of the birds and the smaller mammals as well within the fence, which might actually keep the foxes out, which would be good.
The foxes out of the fence? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like it would help deter that, possibly.
They're not in the fence. They're going to go other places.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
There's a lot of chickens around there, I'm sure.
Perhaps. I think the closest house is, what, a thousand feet away or something like that, so.
And the whole area of the land, the south, how much?
The parcel?
Yes.
A hundred and fifty acres.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Okay. Um, the last time you were in front of us, you mentioned that the, uh, footage away from the trail was fifty. Is that correct? The buffer away from the trail was fifty. You increased it by fifty more feet. So now you're away, you, where are you going to put those solar panels? Is one hundred, uh, one hundred feet buffer?
The landscaping buffer proposed was fifty feet initially. We're now maintaining a hundred feet of additional trees. The panels are-
A hundred and fifty.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty feet away from the actual, from the trail.
From the natural trail?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, a question, um, on Polish Town Road, you have looked like a power line access right on the road there. Will your buffer start after the, uh, the power line requirements there? That, that buffer goes from that, uh, out of point?
There's additional buffering behind, so there's some vegetation between the power line right-of-way and, and the road. But then we're also doing additional buffering in behind there because of the lack of trees at that initial break.
Okay. My, uh, next question is that, what do you do in situations, because you know they're going to be calling for a lot of snow? What do you do about snow panels getting covered?
So, I, in the south, it's generally not a big issue for us, um, because there's not snow often and it, it'll just kind of melt over time. So there's not much maintenance we need to do for snow like we would like in New York, for example.
But you know, every ten years or so, Virginia gets whacked with a really big, heavy ice storm. Um, and it usually stays for about five, six days. Is that going to affect your, your wattage? What do you do about situations like that?
Oftentimes, that, that just means lower production for those six days. And usually that's sort of modeled when we're looking at what production would be. We take into account possible weather conditions. So the panels would, there wouldn't be an impact to them. Uh, with tier-one panels, they're designed to withstand like extreme weather events, including like hail and high wind speeds. So with time, it would just naturally melt. Do you want to add anything?
They're inclined as well, so it's like having snow on a sheet metal roof. It'll warm up and slide off.
Um, so just confirming, the closest residence, I thought I heard you say is about a thousand feet. Is that correct?
I believe so.
That'd be on Polish Town?
Yeah. I mean, I believe the closest house is over here in this area.
And regarding, uh, the remainder of the property, um, so the owner's going to, has already done some pad development that's existing today?
Yes.
And, and I guess, actually, we have your pointer now. The section between the, the pad and the, uh, what you proposed to, for the solar farm is, do you have any intention of adding on to this system, or is that?
No, there's actually a stream, and I believe the county has either a water line or some other type of public utility that cuts down through there as well. That really prevents us from even accessing through this pad back into here. So that's why we had to come in off the Polish Town Road.
All right, thank you.
One more question, Madam Chair. Mr. Wood, uh, if I state this, uh, the phrase "coinciding peak runoff from subwatersheds," do you, you have any inkling what that is?
I'm sorry, can you-
Coinciding peak runoff from subwatersheds?
What do you mean by coinciding?
If you have runoff from one watershed that's attenuated, and, sub, sub, one runoff experienced from one subwatershed that's attenuated. And there's another interconnecting subwatershed that's also attenuated. Then when they release their peak discharges from that attenuation sometimes exceeds the, uh, natural peak, uh, peak runoff through the receiving stream or channel.
So I think that it depends upon how the system's actually modeled.
What I'm trying to look at, what I'm, what I'm not expecting, what I'm suggesting is maybe an analysis that has to be done of the receiving channels of the various BMPs that would make sure that they don't overwhelm, well, get overwhelmed when these coinciding runoff events occur, even when the stormwater is attenuated by stormwater management, still these are BMPs.
Yeah, and I think that's something that's looked through with, as part of the, uh, stormwater processes that you're supposed to analyze the receiving waters to make sure you don't cause those erosive conditions.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And one more. And, and for, uh, staff, and so the applicant does meet all the new requirements we put in place based on your review? Thank you.
Okay, another question. When something breaks, do y'all stockpile it? Or do you remove it from the site?
No, it would be removed from the site.
So it'd be nice and clean, no, no panels here or there, or?
Correct.
Yeah. If, if that's a concern, you could, I'm more than happy to put a condition in there.
Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, well, reverting the, the stockpiling, would that be, would that be something that would be handled in the, the site plan review and approved? Or disapproved?
Do you mean like construction stockpiling when they're building it, or if something were to break and-
If a panel breaks, y'all replace it. What are you going to do with the panels?
Right. That's not typically something we see as part of a site plan, because typically, once a site plan's approved, it's approved.
Okay.
But if they're willing to put in a condition on the permit, and we can make that part of, I think, what Mr. Bennett called a wellness check of the site every once in a while, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, yeah, make sure it's in the bone, bone yard, yeah. Um, the, the other question I had, uh, this, this facility does not currently have any ba- battery, uh, battery storage associated with it. Is there, or should there be any consideration for the potential future add-on of ba- battery storage to this facility?
We're not planning to put any storage on this project, um, now or in the future.
I never say never.
We would come, we would have to come back to y'all-
Yes.
-with another application and hearings and everything to add storage.
As long as that, that's, that's clear that, and-
Yeah.
That would be considered a modi-, uh, truly a modification.
Yeah, and if we were to expand the fenced area, we'd have to come back.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Chair?
I have a question, but before I ask, for the county attorney, we've heard Dominion a lot. I work for Dominion. Dominion's not developed on the project, but they could have an interest of, where do I stand on this mode and, uh, asking questions?
Okay. Don't leave you the conflict of interest, uh, as long as you're not working on the project and have a equity stake or interest of five thousand dollars in the project, you or anybody in your household, which includes an immediate family member who lives in your household, you would be assured of it.
All right, so I think I'm in the clear. Counselor, stop. Can you bring up the, uh, slide again showing the view from Polish Town Road? And this kind of ties in with Ms. Townsend. So the, right there, now go back to where you were, that one right there.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got a, uh, tree line there, then is that right-of-way twenty feet or thirty feet? What is the right-of-way there for the distribution circuit?
Dominion's right-of-way is thirty.
Okay, so that thirty feet is clear, and that's part of the hundred-foot setback, the buffer? Or is it, and to what, uh, Ms. Townsend was asking, does that hundred feet start at the road, or does it start on the inside of that right-of-way?
Bear with me, trying to get to the other screen that we had with the visuals. So it's a conglomerate of both there, all the way on back through. The hundred foot is really from the backside from the Warren ID trail.
Oh, so it's not a hundred-foot buffer uniformly around the, around the fetched area?
I don't believe so. I believe it's a little bit narrower here, whatever the county requires would be down in here, but we did enhance it on the backside.
It's not the clear cut, because the right-of-way?
No, this kind of accounts for that, because we do have additional vegetation in behind there between our poles and the right-of-way for the distribution line.
But I think what we would all like to see is a, kind of a visually impervious natural barrier. And you have a bit of a disadvantage, and because that right-of-way is there, that's thirty foot, feet of cleared space. And so you'd have to ensure that between that right-of-way and the fence line, that that's properly landscaped to provide that visual barrier. And I think that's, that you're concerned, Ms. Townsend?
Well, and I think, too, we want to make sure that, uh, the visibility, I mean, if you did a hedge of something that you could not see. But that, to me, is really important, that we want to sort of camouflage it as much as we can with a natural buffer.
And that's four seasons, right, as well?
Understood, yeah. Well, we're happy to go back and look at that further, see what we can do. I will say, with how it's currently designed, with this visual simulation, we don't expect you to be able to see the panels with what's already there. But we're happy, I mean, I hear what y'all are saying, we're happy to look at it again.
Okay, the one other question I have, um, you're connecting to the existing distribution circuit outside. Does that circuit need to be upgraded? Is it a three-phase circuit? Is it new poles and everything else?
It's three, it is existing three-phase that we would upgrade. I don't believe it's new poles along the circuit. Um, just Dominion would be performing upgrades on the electrical lines.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then I will open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. First on the list is Blake Cox.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, my name's Blake Cox. I live at sixty-four fifty-four Waymore Lane, Chesterfield, Virginia. And I'm one of the co-founders of a nonprofit called Energy Right, uh, where we're focused on helping localities and their citizens navigate the clean energy landscape, given all the new developments that we're seeing all across Virginia here. Our main goals are to educate about clean ener- energy developed to high standards across Virginia, and make solar projects the best neighbors possible. So we encourage energy development the right way on the local level, the focus on conservative ideals and personal private property rights, um, including in all of the above energy strategy. We've had the pleasure and the opportunity to engage with many constituents and community leaders on solar development here in the county. And we appreciate, from what we've heard in the community, the diligent work already accomplished from this commission. And as a reminder, from what we've heard, there's many reasons to support small solar projects, such as the one before you tonight. And all of the above energy strategy will help balance the grid, generate more American energy, and help Virginia eventually become, I hope one day, a net exporter of energy here in the state, as we are currently a net importer. But additionally, solar projects are a unique way of preserving land for future use while generating up to ten more, ten times more revenue for the county than if the land sits unused, which could be a benefit to all residents. And we would also like to reiterate the importance of property rights. It's the keystone of our capitalistic society. We should always be promoting economic opportunities for our neighbors, as long as proposals don't infringe on adjacent neighbors' personal liberties. But again, I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work and the opportunity to address you this evening. And as these energy discussions occur, we just strongly urge you to consider landowners' property rights, American energy generation, and additional revenue opportunities for the county, and also an innovative way to preserve property in new camp. But again, thank you guys for your time tonight, and if we can ever be a resource, we'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Next on the list is Sandy Gauthier.
I'm Sandy Gauthier. Uh, I live at High Bluff Lane in Barrensville. Uh, we also own a farm where Gauthier Winery is, uh, located, which backs up to the current Walker portion of the solar farm that already exists in the county. Uh, I'm here to talk about solar facility fires. Newspaper headline, "A mower struck a rock Tuesday afternoon, causing a spark that ignited a wildfire at a Wilson Solar Farm." That was in November of twenty-twenty-one, and this Wilson is Wilson, North Carolina, down ninety-five, right across the border. It took seven fire and rescue vehicles and seventeen firefighters, plus the East Nash Volunteer Fire Department, to put out that fire. Two acres of solar land was burned, and one acre outside of the fence on private property in the adjacent forest burned. They said they were lucky, the article that was in the newspaper, they were lucky because the ground was wet. Otherwise, a fire would have spread more quickly and been, uh, more damaging. Essex County, Virginia, a solar facility located in Dunsville, Virginia. The third fire was reported there on seven March twenty-two. Fifty acres burned as a result of that fire. Two fires in March twenty-two were reported at the Sadler Solar Farm in Emporia. The headline read, "Dominion Energy Closes Part of the Solar Plant at Emporia." Two fires in the same month. One was a failed connector, the other was an internal fire in an inverter. Both times, the fire department was reported to have arrived within minutes. It took two hours to extinguish both of those fires. Can solar farms catch on fire? Yes, they can, and they do. Although we're told fires are uncommon, the aftermath of a fire can be devastating. When a solar fire catches fire, millions of dollars in equipment can be destroyed in a matter of minutes. Combine that with the potential for loss of life, wildfires, and other environmental impacts, and the dangers become much more apparent. This is especially true for solar facilities located in rural areas where emergency response teams may be miles away or not available at all. In the U.S., you might be interested, solar fires are not categorized as solar fires. They're put in a group called "other." Other, that's the category. So when you try to pull out the data on fires at solar farms, it's not there. The only time you can find it is if there's a headline, or if there's a newspaper article. Other than that, these fires cannot be seen. And I, I want to make just one little last point. In December- In December of last year, right here in Barrensville, there was a fire at the solar farm. You probably didn't hear about it, you didn't read it in the newspaper, and it wasn't on the news, on the TV. Uh, it was started by a vendor, somebody cutting grass. Uh, it could have burned down the whole community, and I was told by a firefighter who was there, thank God, it wasn't windy that day. Thank you.
Uh, next on the list is Larry DeZula.
My name is Larry DeZula. I live at 18515 New Kent Highway, Barrensville. Lifetime resident. Uh, I oppose the, uh, solar farm for property values. I think the land could be used for something better. Wanted to point out to the, uh, Planning Commission, that King and Queen County has got, VEPCO has bought 1,800 acres, 1,800 acres. How many megawatts is that going to produce? And joining James City County, on the Hunt Farm, that large has, uh, farm has several hundred acres in there, that they're building a, a solar farm on, that's not come online. So I think the potential for the demand is being met, and we really don't need that in our county. Thank for your time.
Andrea Wooton.
Hi, I'm Andrea Mahaffey Wooton, it's my maiden name, and I live on Polish Town Road at 1871, and I will be a close neighbor, less than a mile, to the proposed solar farm, even though during the New Leaf Energy presentation, they said there were, in quotes, "no surrounding neighbors." My concerns with the Polish Solar Farm, and why I oppose this, are the destruction of the woodlands and the displacement of the wildlife that live there, which causes increased destruction on my property and my surrounding neighbors. I have experienced this since the construction of the current solar farm, that's at the other end of Polish Town Road, so I'll be a smack dab in the middle. I do not believe the tax revenue the county will receive, roughly $6,800 a year for 40 years, is worth destroying the woodland and creating this isore. Not when I'm paying half of that on a lot less acres. We're supposed to be conservators of the land. I am unclear of the benefits to residents and the county. I understand the state mandated the Virginia Clean Economy Act, where we are supposed to have 100% carbon-free electricity by 2045. I do not believe this is feasible. How much woodland would have to be destroyed to achieve this? The question was asked to New Leaf Energy, "Why can't solar panels go on existing structures?" They said, "Because there are different types of panels for residential versus what is proposed for the solar farm." Well, do they not still create solar energy that feeds the power grid? I would gladly put solar panels on my house, but it would cost me $32,000. If the government was truly interested in a solution to the supposed energy crisis, then somehow, using current structures, structures, and other viable options should be explored. But as there is no money to be made in cures, only in treatments, there is no money to be made in solutions. So it makes me wonder who actually benefits here, besides the investment firm landowner who doesn't even live here. Please keep New Kent beautiful, and keep it home to the first first lady, and beautiful wineries, and not home to solar farms. Thank you.
Next on the list is Charles Carrow.
Evening, Madam Chairman, uh, my name is Charles Carrow. I live at 4800 Windy Lane in Barrensville, about a little over two miles from the subject property. I want you to know about some of the negative impacts solar facilities can have on the citizens of the county. And, uh, I'll tell you about my experience from the previous, uh, during the first few years of operation of the Correctional Solar Farm, or the Amazon Solar Farm in New Kent, the one that other people talked about. I experienced a high-pitched electronic-sounding noise on my Verizon telephone line. And this is my business telephone, and many clients complained about the noise on the line, characterizing it as a screeching, or one, one person even asked me, "Are you slaughtering crickets?" That's what it sounded like. And I found out that many of my neighbors in Barrensville were experiencing the same thing. It took many, many calls to Verizon and to Dominion, and multiple visits by their respective technical people to try and even figure out what was going on, and what was the source of the interference. And after lots of finger-pointing, and many calls from me, the solar farm finally admitted to the, the problem, and it was with their equipment, and agreed to fix it. But it took, oh, golly, ye, ye, more than a year, and they finally, uh, got it ameliorated, but it's mostly fixed, but it still comes back from time to time. And I really wouldn't like to have that kind of thing repeated. The subject of tonight's hearing, the Polish Town Solar Farm, is not that far away, and I don't think we need another potential source of interference in the county. I note that the county's performance standard gives specific conditions for solar energy facilities, but the part about EMI is not all that specific, and I don't see any enforcement mechanism at all, and I am concerned that the county, not, I'm not convinced that the county has the resources to ensure that these conditions are met. There have been other concerns about the Correctional, uh, Amazon Solar Farm, including the fact that they did not plant the vegetative buffer, any vegetative buffer on the east side of Route 30, and that they apparently did not control the stormwater runoff, so a downstream dam was blown out. And I'll just note, I've heard that we're looking at like the 10-year storm, but we've had a lot more, more than 10-year storms, but a dam on property I own was blown out in a storm just a few years ago, and, uh, it was like the 100-year storm, so I think we might need to be looking at more than that, but, um, I'll say that others, other solar farms being proposed for our county, but not necessarily because it is a good location for solar energy. At the public information meeting for the Olivet Church Road proposal, I asked the county representatives specifically why they chose the site, and their response was not that it was a technically good... Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, well, my point was that, uh, Virginia's not necessarily good, it's just the state mandate is being pushed on us, and, uh, well, I had some further remarks here, but, uh, my time is up, so... Thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, and, uh, thank you all for your work, and I wish you all Merry Christmas. I'll hand in my remote.
Next on the list is Stephanie Ripchick.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I appreciate your time tonight, letting me speak for a few minutes. Uh, my name is Stephanie Dean Ripchick. I live at 4901 Holly Fork Road, Barrensville, Virginia. I am also a lifelong resident of New Kent, a taxpayer, and a farmer, and a very proud fourth-generation farmer. The solar facility, a lot of what I wanted to say has already been touched on by all of my fantastic neighbors, and I wish more of them were here to express how they feel. I think that $272,000 over 40 years, it almost makes me laugh a little bit, and I also think that we did not, we didn't hear the portion about the new $50,000 bonus that's now also being offered. I think that money is not the issue here. I think that when I look at our county website, one of the first things I read today, the very first thing, when it spoke about, let's see, "Quick facts about our community in New Kent County," the very first line talks about all the pine and hardwoods and the large percentage. And then the third line is about the abundant recreational activities, including hunting, fishing, boating, nature trails, golf, team sports, horse racing, et cetera. I personally, and I think I feel this way and can speak for many folks in my area, this is not the vision that we have for Barrensville. Oftentimes, I think that because we don't have a large amount of folks in our area, it's, looks like it's okay to put something like that there. It's not okay. We don't want it, and as much as they say it doesn't affect the neighbors, it absolutely affects the neighbors. Um, I have a friend in King and Queen Larry spoke of, that is neighboring to the 1,800, 18,000 solar farm, what's not proposed, I think it's a done deal on their facility. And, um, she's been trying to sell her house across the street with 35 acres for a year and a half, and that is the main reason that it has not sold. I wouldn't buy it either, if that was going to be across the street from me. As well, again, I, I think farming is important. I don't think, I don't use the term "solar farm," I think it's a facility. I understand that energy is needed, and more energy will be needed over time. I don't think this is the place for this. I agree with, I enjoyed the questions about the Polish Town Road, the, the 30 feet, that very small buffer, it still is not enough. And the Warren on Nature Trail, I have hiked many times. When those leaves are off the trees, you are going to be able to see this. I also think you're going to have less folks coming to enjoy the nature trail, and I think there's going to be a problem with all of the wildlife going to neighbors, eating up their possible landscape, as well as just a problem overall. Um, that, that is a problem. There are not enough of these facilities, nor has enough time gone by, that we have any history on, how will the cleanup go? Can we have more fires? What can happen? I just think there's too many what-ifs. Um, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
And last on the list is Hannah Ripchick.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Ripchick. I live at 4901 Holly Fork Road in Barrensville. I oppose this solar project because I am the future in this county, and I don't plan on moving, I look forward to residing here and raising my family here. I plan to take over our family farm operation and expand the farm, so I can't help but to think to myself, what will this solar project look like in 30 to 40 years? Will it be deconstructed and disposed of properly? Solar panel recycling is still at an early stage. Landfills are filling up every day, and only 10% of solar panels are recycled in the U.S. The rest end up in our landfills. I find it hard to believe that these companies that install these solar panels are even going to be in business, much less willing to pay to recycle them, as it is very expensive. Solar panels are terrible for landfills. PV panels contain toxic materials like lead that can cause environmental pollution. Pollution is a substantial problem in our country. Pollution levels in numerous areas of the United States exceed national air quality standards. Landfills in our country are filling up every day. It is proposed that if things don't change soon, the USA could run out of landfill space in as early as 22 years. I can only imagine how many solar panels will need to be disposed of in 22 years. What will we do with them? So I ask that this evening, you please consider me the future of this county and our environment. We certainly don't need any more pollution, we need to protect our planet. I feel this project would not be beneficial to our county, and it would do more harm than good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for all the comments. Um, I now close the public hearing and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt. Um, I think tonight I will start with discussion, before I ask for a motion. Anyone like to begin discussion? Or I can choose somebody?
Mr. Chairman. Because we have heard this matter before, uh, in the past, and, um, they've made some changes, after this discussion, I'm ready to put in a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir, I do. I move to forward application CUP-02-23 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, with an unfavorable recommendation for the following reasons. I just don't believe that it, uh, it, it, I just don't believe that at this point, um, they have provided enough evidence for us to change, um, our previous vote.
Ms. Thomas, I should remind you that this commission voted in favor of it last time.
I did not.
Okay, uh, okay, you did not.
I did not.
Discussion. If I may pick on you, Mr. Laurashell, I think you had some remarks regarding solar energy beforehand. In my, in my work with Dominion Energy, obviously, I'm, uh, in the energy sector, whether you support the Virginia Clean Economy Act or not, it's, uh, a mandate. We are, you know, many utilities retiring traditional coal-fired units, and that even , uh, natural gas, uh, units now are less desirable. So, quite frankly, I cringe to think, if we have a polar vortex that descends on us this winter, um, what the, what the ramifications could be? Because we've seen what happened in Texas several years ago, and it's happening more and more. The demand for electricity isn't going down, but the supply of electricity, we're reliable, dispatchable load, we can push a button and roll a generator, that is going away. And, um, so there are, the energy industry is in flux right now, and whether you follow the North, uh, North American Electrical Liability Council, NERC, many, many organizations have highlighted that the grid is distressed right now because of, uh, a lot of these retirements and a lack of replacement, uh, generation. Thank you, Mr. Laurashell. Ms. Rose, you have any discussion?
Uh, well, I, I do agree with what Mr. Laurashell was, uh, was espousing. I also thi, I think the key, key point was dispatchable energy, which the solar farm, uh, the solar facilities are, are not. The point that, uh, Mrs. Gauthier brought, brought up about the, about the fires and the, uh, potential strain on our fire resources, uh, I mean, I, I can't, I can't think of a situation where pumper trucks dispatched to, to that could do anything more than put water around the facility to stop potential wildfires. I mean, they're, they don't have the capability to put out electrical fires. So, uh, I think there, there's a significant concern there, but, um, from an aspect of the zoning of the, of the property in and of itself, it's not inconsistent with the zoning for that pe, that piece of land.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Thomas, would you want to make any more elaboration on discussion?
Not, not at this time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, I, I'm not going to make comment this evening, because I'll likely be voting in.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. We'll come to that a little later. Mr. Tiller.
Uh, no comments.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Townsend. Thank you, Ms. Tom, uh, Townsend. Dr. Schmidt.
No comment.
Mr. Davis.
Uh, continuing with what Ms. Rose is speaking about as far as the land use, um, and I do understand and appreciate, um, concerns from, from neighbors, um, as far as if it impacts property values, um, you see it unsightly. In this case, it will still be surrounded by industrial or conservation. If the buffers can be maintained, where you can't see them from the trail at the park there, um, it's going to be industrials, industrial zoning on both sides of it still, because it's on the same parcel, and this part is in the middle, and then you have a jail on the other side. I'm not certain there's going to be residential movement to that area to begin with. I don't think I would, would live next to the jail to begin with, but that's me, but, so it's not inconsistent with what... So it's not inconsistent with what the future land use map has for this. Industrial and A1 uses or zoning is appropriate for solar farms, whether we agree with the concept of solar farms or not. It is allowed in, in the county code. We did take a bit of effort to clean up some, I don't want to say poor decisions, but a lack of enforcement that we should have taken care of on the other facilities. And I like to think that what we, what was implemented in the county code deals with that, so we won't have to look through that again. We don't have to worry about what's downrange as far as, you know, taking out a person's pond or dam, as far as runoff goes. So we did put a bit of effort into that and, and again, to hopefully cut off problems like that in the future. But again, as far as finding a reason that doesn't meet from a land use perspective, I'm having a hard time finding why that, we would deny it based on land use.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Butler.
No comment right now.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Mr. Moyer.
I should.
You should, nor you won't.
He said.
He said, okay.
I can't.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. My feeling is that this, we're currently, this property is owned industrial. And in my mind, solar facility use, or any kind of generation facility there on that property, zone industrial, is an appropriate use of the property. My memory serves me that Dominion Power is losing electrical power generation facilities. I believe Yorktown is scheduled to come offline in about five years or less. And there's going to be a need to, Yorktown, okay, thank you, Yorktown's gone. There is a need to supplement that energy need. We have, like Mr. Davis has said, included some performance criteria that I think is outstanding and having these folks meet that, I think, is a step in the right direction that such facilities can exist in New Kent County. Not everywhere, but just prudently placed. I further recommend, but I'd not, not recommend this in any kind of motion or stuff, that eventually we come to a point that we have some kind of master plan of where these facilities could be established in New Kent County and have them ideally located versus just a application that comes before us. With that, I will call for the vote. I will remind our commissioners that if you vote aye, you're, you're voting for our unfavorable, unfavorable recommendation to the board. If you vote aye, you're voting for our unfavorable recommendation to the board. Ms. Berry.
Mr. Moyer.
Abstain.
Ms. Pearson.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose. Ms. Butler.
Nay.
Dr. Schmidt.
Nay.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Nay.
Mr. Laurachelle.
Nay.
Mr. Davis.
Nay.
Mr. Tiller.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Nay. The motion is defeated.
Mr. Chairman, I assume that we would like to go ahead and put another motion onto the floor?
Please.
In order to address, protect, and promote the public convenience necessity and general welfare and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC one two two three to forward the application CUP oh two two three to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation. And further move that the planning commission finds in this proj, finds in this project to be a sustainable accord with the comprehensive plan.
I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to ask our, I'm going to ask our attorney if I can amend that to include one or two items in that was brought forth.
There being a motion on the floor to adopt a favorable recommendation, somebody could move to amend the motion to adopt a favorable recommendation. I would suggest that any recommendation for a condition have conditions that are towards the mitigation of the impacts of the property with respect to land use.
Not actual use.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Not the actual use. For instance, we, there was discussion on the health checks every so often.
I think that would be within bounds.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I believe that would be within bounds.
Okay. So with that, I would like to recommend an amendment to Ms. Townsend's recommendation, I mean, excuse me, proposal. Excuse me. Motion. Thank you very much. To amend it to include health checks of the property on a periodic level, subject to both the applicant and the county representative who would be doing the health checks.
And I would just like to remind the commission that we will have two votes, one on the motion to amend, which is Mr. Bennett's motion.
Yep.
And then after that, the second would be the underlying motion.
Well, let's do the motion to amend vote first, okay? So the motion is to amend the motion by Ms. Townsend with the health checks. Could we have roll call, please?
Sure.
Mr. Moyer.
Abstain.
Ms. Pearson.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Nay.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Laurachelle.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. The motion passes. Now, we have before still the motion to approve the, the CUP application. With that, I'll call, roll call, please.
Mr. Moyer.
Abstain.
Ms. Pearson.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Nay.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Laurachelle.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you to our citizens and thank you for our presenters. Moving along on our agenda, our next item for on the agenda is new business and I'll defer to Mr. Leduke. Do we have any new business? Thank you very much. You want to wait just a moment?
Mr. Bennett, can I make a comment?
Certainly, sir.
I, I want to congratulate the planning commission on their use of the term land use in what we do up here as a planning commission. Whether, take the emotion out of this, you have to go and what is the appropriate use of the land that we see. And that was done tonight. So I commend that to everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moyer and the commissioners. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move along to chairman's report. I'm going to go to the first item. I do have a second item that's not in our agenda, but the first item's the January meeting date. And it's in es, in essence, what's being before you is the same schedule as last year. There's no interference with Juneteenth this year. But the first two meetings of the year, both in January and February, are delayed one day because of the holiday. The rest of the meeting schedule is the same. Any issues with that from our commissioners? See, and none, I will move on. And I'll call this for our guests and our commissioners, kind of a end of year statement. Please bear with me with my wordsmithing and things like that, because I'm not the best at English. In the midst of the holiday season at the, and the year ending twenty twenty-three, many of us have used this time for reflection of the changes that they have experienced over the course of the year. For some of our members on this commission, the memories of the years past may have included some difficult life moments. For Ms. Rose, Ms. Townsend, Mr. Davis, this has been true. I hope I speak for this commission when I say, when you're amongst family and friends this season and in the future, and the mention of the name of the family lost, a sparkle appears in your eyes and the spirit of your soul becomes uplifted with the memory shared. In the recent past, I've reviewed the decisions of this commission. As made this past year, our decisions involve change, how best to accommodate change, yet maintain the community's character, future vision, and virtues. I can say this past year, as we, we as commissioners have demonstrated, honor and integrity in these decisions. Going to have a little fun now. There are a few of the members here I wish to make special acknowledgement for their engagement this past year. Ms. Amy Pearson, for her representation, not only here, but at the Plan RVA. Thank you very much. For Ms. Rose, Mr. Moyer and Mr. Laurachelle, for their presence and participation in the New Kent County Comprehensive Plan. And Mr. Joseph Davis for being the chairman of the steering committee for the New Kent County Comprehensive Plan. That takes an immense amount of time. To these ladies and gentlemen, thank you. And it would be a loss if I didn't say thank you to the staff. Mr. Volam back there in the back behind the shielded cage there. Ms. Leduke is in, and Ms. Berry and Mr. Ms. Adams, who appears infrequently here, but she does appear. Hardly thank you for your work well done this year. Thank you. I mentioned there's change and there's going to be changes on this commission. And when I call your name, we'd like you for stand up. And Mr. Davis will read a few words. Ms. Kathleen Butler, would you please stand, please? Mr. Davis.
Planning Commission, County of New Kent, Virginia. At the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the County of New Kent in the boardroom of the admin building in New Kent, Virginia on the eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, a resolution to recognize, thank, and commend Ms. Kathleen Butler for her service as a member of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Whereas Catherine Butler was first appointed to the New Kent County Planning Commission on December tenth, twenty twelve, and whereas she resigned from the commission on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Ms. Butler served as an officer of the Planning Commission numerous times throughout her years on the commission. And whereas Ms. Butler provided steady guidance and advice with respect to activities and development within the county and maintaining the rural way of life. And whereas Ms. Butler has been consistent and persistent in her dedication to serving the best interests of the county as a whole, and at all times professionally and conscientiously carried out her duties as a member and officer of the Planning Commission. And whereas Ms. Butler has served her community and New Kent County with pride, dignity, grace, and wisdom, and will be greatly missed. And whereas the New Kent County Planning Commission desires to recognize Ms. Butler for her service to the county. Now, therefore be it resolved, this eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-third, by the New Kent County Planning Commission, that Catherine Butler be, and she is hereby thanked and commended for exemplary service to the citizens of New Kent County as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved, that the commission and the planning department staff members extend our best wishes to Ms. Butler and her family in all their future endeavors. Attested, Van Mark Bennett, Chair of New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I did, I started this on twenty twelve, in twenty twelve, and I have enjoyed it. I have learned a lot. I am a lifelong citizen of New Kent County, born and raised, so this means a lot to me. But it's time to let someone else fill the seat for a while. But thank you. I have enjoyed working with everyone, staff, the planning commission, the board, the county. I can't say enough about how good these people are. So, thank you.
Mr. Moyer, you're next, sir. Mr. Davis, if you would please.
Planning Commission, County of New Kent, Virginia. At the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the New Kent, of the County of New Kent in the boardroom of the admin building in New Kent, Virginia on the eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, a resolution to recognize, thank, and commend Mr. John Moyer for his service as a member of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Whereas John Moyer first, was first appointed to the New Kent County Planning Commission on May eleventh, twenty fifteen, and whereas he was elected to serve as a New Kent County Board of Supervisor member beginning twenty, January first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas Mr. Moyer served as an officer of the Planning Commission numerous times throughout his years on the commission. And whereas Mr. Moyer provided steady guidance and advice with respect to activities and development within the county and maintaining the rural way of life. And whereas Mr. Moyer has been consistent and persistent in his dedication to serving the best interests of the county as a whole, and at all times professionally and conscientiously carried out his duties as a member and officer of the Planning Commission. And whereas Mr. Moyer has served his community and New Kent County with pride, dignity, grace, and wisdom, and will surely continue to do so as supervisor. And whereas the New Kent County Planning Commission desires to recognize Mr. Moyer for his service on the Planning Commission. Now, therefore be it resolved, this eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, by the New Kent County Planning Commission, that John Moyer be, and is hereby thanked and commended for his exemplary service to the citizens of New Kent County as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved, that the commission and planning department staff members extend their best, our best wishes, Mr. Moyer and his family in all their future endeavors. Attested, Van Mark Bennett, Chair of New Kent County Planning Commission.
There is a way to graduate from this upward, and you've succeeded.
Oh, we have a number of people that have done that.
And also, I don't think we're finished with you, and you're probably not finished with us.
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
That's not necessarily my decision.
Yeah, Mr. Moyer's got a seat for you.
Any words to the commission?
Well, there's words to the commission and to the citizens. I appreciate just having that, this opportunity to, to be able to serve in this role in the Planning Commission. And as Katie said, the amount that you learn from these people up here, the staff, that is all engaging, i- is amazing. Hopefully, and I believe it's going to take me to the next role and hopefully be a, a very good representative of my district, too. Also, a real good representative for the rest of the county, too. So I just want to thank you for this, thank you for the adulation and that, and I really appreciate everything everybody's done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Our next victim is Mr. Thomas Tiller, our commissioner forever. Mr. Tiller, please.
I think my voice, I got one or two more now. That's why I got two bottles of water here. Planning Commission, County of New Kent, Virginia. At the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the County of New Kent in the boardroom of the admin building at New Kent, Virginia, on the eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, a resolution to recognize, thank, and commend Mr. C. Thomas Tiller, Jr., for his service as a member of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Whereas C. Thomas, Tommy Tiller, Jr., was first appointed to the New Kent County Planning Commission on January fourteenth, two thousand and eight, and whereas he has served in the New Kent County Board of Supervisors member on the Planning Commission every year since twenty twelve. And whereas Mr. Tiller served as an officer of the Planning Commission numerous times throughout his years on the commission. And whereas Mr. Tiller provided steady guidance and advice with respect to activities and development within the county and maintaining the rural way of life. And whereas Mr. Tiller has been consistent and persistent in his dedication to serving the best interests of the county as a whole, and at all times professionally and conscientiously carried out his duties as a member and officer of the Planning Commission. And whereas Mr. Tiller has served his community in New Kent County, and New Kent County with pride, dignity, grace, and wisdom, and it will be greatly missed. And whereas the New Kent County Planning Commission desires to recognize Mr. Tiller for his service on the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Now, therefore be it resolved, this on the eighteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, by the New Kent County Planning Commission, that C. Thomas, Tommy Tiller, Jr., be, and he is hereby thanked and commended for his exemplary service to the citizens of New Kent County as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved, that the commission and planning department staff members extend our best wishes to Mr. Tiller and his family in all their future endeavors. Attested, Van Mark Bennett, Chair of New Kent County Planning Commission.
Just seems like 20 years ago I started. But I really wanna thank John and Katie. Katie started 12 years ago when I started on board, and she was my mainstay for 12 years. John, I think, was my third appointee in District 2, but he served the last eight years. So there's a lot of experience leading this commission this year, between the two of them and now Ms. Pearson. But that's a lot, that's a lot of years' experience on this commission. So I thank all of y'all, and I thank everybody else on this commission as well. So looking forward to hearing from you and John in the future.
You're very welcome, sir. Thank you. And our last presentation is hot off the press as of about 3 o'clock today, I believe. Ms. Pearson, 3:45, okay. Ms. Pearson was selected to sit on the Board of Supervisors for the upcoming year. And we do have a presentation or acknowledgement here for your past service here. If you would mind coming up? Or I can meet you down there. I'll meet you down there.
Did he even catch the square?
Just read the last one.
I asked you, I was like, just say ditto. I give you the same justice everyone else got.
Planning Commission, County of New Kent, Virginia. At the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the County of New Kent in the Boardroom of the Admin Building in New Kent, Virginia, on the 18th day of December 2023, a resolution to recognize, thank, and commend Ms. Amy Pearson for her service as a member of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Whereas Amy Pearson was first appointed to the New Kent County Planning Commission on February 13th, 2017, and whereas she was appointed to serve as a New Kent County Board of Supervisor member beginning January 1st, 2024, and whereas Ms. Pearson served as an officer of the Planning Commission numerous times throughout her years on the commission, and whereas Ms. Pearson provided steady guidance and advice with respect to activities and development within the county and maintaining the rural way of life, and whereas Ms. Pearson has been consistent and persistent in her dedication to serving the best interests of the county as a whole, and at all times professionally and conscientiously carried her duties out as a member and officer of the Planning Commission, and whereas Ms. Pearson has served her, has served her community and New Kent County with pride, dignity, grace, and wisdom, and will surely continue to do so as a supervisor, and whereas the New Kent County Planning Commission desires to recognize Mrs. Pearson for her service on the Planning Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved this 18th day of December 2023 by the New Kent County Planning Commission that Amy Pearson be, and that she is hereby thanked and commended for exemplary service to the citizens of New Kent County as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that the commission and planning department staff members extend our best wishes to Ms. Pearson and her family in all their future endeavors. Attested, Van Mark Bennett, Chair of New Kent County Planning Commission.
Ms. Pearson, do you have any words for remaining members?
Not sure I could say anything that they hadn't already said, but I will say that I've lived in many places in the United States and over in England for four years. And I've never felt a sense of community like I have here in New Kent County. I've lived here for almost 23 years. And I'll die here too. So, not to make it morbid or anything, but I too have gained a wealth of knowledge from all of you. And, and thank you very much. I'll have some more comments later.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Just a few more remarks here. As you can see, changes will continue next month at the Planning Commission level and our annual organizational meeting. I encourage all commissioners to consider and discuss with your colleagues and members of the commission for their chair, vice chair positions and the representatives to the Plan RBA. It's been a distinct pleasure and honor to be your chairman this past year. I thank you very much. And I close with a warm wish to everybody here in our audience and up here on, at their positions to continue to enjoy the holiday season. You're very welcome. Moving on. Well, Ms. Pearson, guess who's up with Plan RBA?
Yes, okay. So I attended the Plan RBA meeting this past Thursday. And the whole meeting was about Ms. Patricia A. Page. And it was, it was such a wonderful meeting. I wanted to share that the members honored the memory of Ms. Page, and they, along with the CBTA and various other surrounding localities, will write letters to support the New Kent County Resolution that names the New Kent portion of I-64 in memory of the Honorable Patricia A. Page. Many members shared stories of Ms. Page, and they, like we, absolutely believe the widening of I-64 in New Kent would not have occurred without Ms. Page's resolve and persistence. And I can't thank Ms. Page enough for appointing me to the Planning Commission and believing in me. She was a wonderful friend and a mentor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. I believe we, going into commissioners' report, and I will go roundabout here, go to Mr. Teller, please.
I don't have anything to say this last meeting, but thank you.
Thank you for your advice over the years. Ms. Townsend.
Yes, I do have something to say. I feel like my family is leaving. But I have an empty nest syndrome here or something. But I would like to say that it's been an honor to work with all of y'all, every one of you. I know it, it's challenging sometimes to, to deal with issues that we have to deal with and stay on task and keep our cool, you know? But everyone did such a wonderful job. And I'm really gonna miss the people that will be leaving. People that I will see, I will enjoy seeing. And Mr. Teller, I'm gonna desperately miss you. And Catherine, I'm gonna miss your Rome cake.
She can come back for us.
But again, it's been an honor to work with all of y'all.
Ms. Thomas, any report?
I don't have a report, but I would like to add on to something that, use this time to add on something about Ms. Page.
Certainly.
Because Ms. Page appointed me. Ms. Page and I, we met each other about six years ago when she appointed me due to an act that I did here in New Kent County that I, I just didn't think anything of, but which was pulling someone out of a burning pot. And she saw something in me. That being said, I wanted just to take the time to highlight her. From many of the conversations that we had, not only was she my Board of Supervisor for District 3, she was my friend. And we became friends throughout the years, sharing many different things. Ms. Page had accomplished a lot of her life, even down to being the first woman in her squad in the military. Most people did not know that. So she was a trailblazer even back then, until now, when it was a number of boys that she served on being the first woman, not to mention she was first African-American woman to do so. But more than anything, I have to thank her for one, believing in me and to know that not only did I, I sit back and I listen, but I also listened to what constituents and what people are saying, and all of the neighbors and the things that come in front of us. So it's, it's about land, but it's also about people. And that's one thing that she metriced me on. But the last thing that I wanna say is that Ms. Page loved this county. If I didn't know anything else about her, I knew that she loved this county. I should've said that was number three. Because number one, number two was she loved her family. Oh, the stories that she gave me about her family. Number one for me was that even though I am not a lifelong citizen of New Kent County, I came here about six years ago, my family is. Most people don't know that I'm a Moody. And Moody's ring here, names ring in New Kent County. My grandmother was a Moody. And they migrated from New Kent County to Louisa County. And that's why I know so much about New Kent County, because of my grandparents. It's a long line of Moody's that were here and they're still here. But more importantly, more than anything, more than anything, I want to say this on record, she loved God the most. She was very spiritual. And if you knew anything about Ms. Page, she cared about people. She cared about her family. She loved New Kent County. She loved New Kent, she loved family, but she loved God.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Dr. Smith.
I can't beat that. I'm gonna just say ditto on what Patty said, and I had no idea I was gonna be saying goodbye to everybody tonight. I'm gonna miss you guys.
For some reason, I think you'll see him again. Ms. Rose.
Wow, I can't beat that. No, I've, I've enjoyed working with, with everyone. I'm sorry to see so many of you going. I feel like the, my Big Fat Greek wedding. No, seriously, I mean, I, I wish everyone well with going on to bigger and better things and, you know, retire, going to new challenges. And I've enjoyed working with you, and I'll continue to hopefully work with, with everybody and the new folks that are gonna come on. And I just wish everybody a wonderful holiday.
Mr. Davis.
I'll dispense with the pleasantries first. I will miss all of you as well. I'm still consider myself a newbie on the commission. I guess Mr. LaRochelle and I are still rookies technically, right? And will always be until we get the replacements coming. We get bumped, we'll get bumped up then.
What we're going to do in this chair is terrible.
But, but yeah, in my, in my short time here, I feel like I have learned a bit from, from your more senior members and am sorry to see, see you go, but I know you're building some bigger and better things and, and wish you all well. And, and look forward to seeing one of you come back and sit on the commission. One of you. Two equally qualified people here that could come back. And real briefly, I'll talk about the Steering Committee. Since our last Planning Commission meeting in October, the Board of Supervisors, they were briefed on October 31st at the work session by EPR staff. And, and they, EPR, still continue to work on land use elements as well as transportation elements. We had planned on doing a December Steering Committee meeting. That did not, did not work out. So we're now looking for January to have the next Steering Committee meeting. So hopefully we'll get that scheduled soon. And other than that, we'll have another, I'll have another Zoom meeting with staff and EPR coming up on Wednesday, and I'll update you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. LaRochelle.
Best wishes to everyone. Happy holidays, especially the folks that are, they're leaving the board, in particular our new, soon-to-be new supervisors. Wish you all, wish you both the best and good luck in your new roles. And see you in January.
Thank you, Mr. LaRochelle, Ms. Butler.
Thank you again, and happy holidays to everyone. And if you invite me back, I'll come.
It's on YouTube now, I think, huh? Mr. Moyer.
I'm gonna stay short with Katie. Thanks, everybody, for the encouragement that we get up here. The one thing that I do wanna comment about is that I, I've had some discussions with Kenny in the back. I, in the past, I've, you can't really tell how important an issue is by the number of people out in the audience. Sometimes it's very important and they just can't make it. I've asked Kenny in the past, I said, how many people are watching us on YouTube right now? And Kenny will go, four. Well, that, that's not as encouraging as I wanted, but he goes, and I do know that one of them is Kelly's mom from Wisconsin. She's watching probably as we speak. And Kelly will sit in the right spot, too. But, you know, and then this, this kind of, you know, not attitude, but this kind of jockularity or whatever you wanna say, I've enjoyed that, that not every time has to be complete serious. But we always respect each other and, and understand where everybody's coming from that. And again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
I did the Planning RBA report. Can I say some other things?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay. So this afternoon at around 4, 4 o'clock, I was appointed as the interim District 3 supervisor, and I had prepared some remarks in case that had happened. Would it be okay if I share those remarks?
Certainly.
Mr. Teller, you're...
My audience, okay? And the rest of the board members. I am truly honored by your competence in me. Make no mistake, though, I could try the rest of my life, and I could never take the place of Ms. Page. She truly was an icon and voice for New Kent County. And although I can't fill her shoes, I would give it my all to be the voice for the District 3 citizens of New Kent County. Like Ms. Page, I'm a listener, a thinker, and a doer. I assure you, I will be accessible, and I will give 110%. Again, I thank you for your faith in my abilities, and I look forward to working with Mr. Evelyn, Mr. Steers, Ms. Jordan, Mr. Moyer, as well as the New Kent County staff and citizens in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. If I could say one word about Ms. Page, I didn't know her very well, even though my wife was appointed to the Wetlands Board by her. If I could put it in one word, it would be cheerleader. The quintessential cheerleader for New Kent County. So I think you can fill those role, that role. It's gonna be hard, but I think you can fill that role. So we'll move on to the last components of our agenda. Staff reports, Ms. Kelly Laddoo.
Just very briefly, I think we touched on next month's agenda. If y'all feel that you're ready, and after you have more time to look at the CIP, I will get with staff and a couple of you to see if we're ready to do a public hearing on the CIP. And then believe we will have another solar energy CUP to consider in January.
Thank you, Ms. Laddoo. We've already announced the meeting schedule, so I will say that our tentative meeting is January 16th, Tuesday, at 6:30 PM in this building. And I will close and say happy holidays to everybody. And if I have a motion to adjourn, Ms. Townsend, it is now 8:54. Thank you very much, people. Happy holidays to you all. Thank you.